Members and to the viewing public in our social media platform. The Chair will now call today's order of business for the fiscal year 2026 budget hearing for the municipality of Tinian and Agiguan. Here at the Tinian courthouse. And today with us, we have to my right, the Vice Chair of the Standing Committee, Representative BJ Atto. We also have Representative Julie Ogo. To her left, we have Representative TJ Manglonia. And to his left, we have our colleague from the Second Senatorial District, Representative Patrick San Nicolás. And to his left, we have Representative Angelo Camacho. To his left, we have our floor leader, Representative Marisa Flores. And to her left, we have Representative Vincent O'Donnell. And to his left, we have Representative Joe Flores. To his left, we have Representative Malcolm Omar. And to his left, we have Representative Denita Yantemay. And with eleven members present on today's proceeding, we have duly established a quorum to conduct today's order of business. Do I hear an adoption for the agenda? There is a motion to adopt today's agenda and it has been seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Motion adopted. Moving along in our order of business, we are now on item three, public comments. Are there any public comments? Seeing that there is no public comments, we'll move further down on item four, introduction. And the Chair would now like to take this opportunity to thank the mayor and the municipality for being here. We want to also extend our gratitude and appreciation to the judicial branch for allowing us to use the Tinian courthouse to conduct today's order of business. Joining us also today, we have our Secretary of Finance, Mrs. Tracy Norita. And OMB, Ms. Vicky Villegomis, to join us if there's any questions with regard to the municipality. So with that said, first on today's order of business is the Tinian Mayor's Office. And we have our mayor here before us. And at this time, I give you the floor mayor for your opening remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and if no objection, Mr. Chair, can I call up one of my staff to be with me during this?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Alan Perez. Good morning. Buenos dias. Mr. Chairman, my good friend, Mr. Chairman Patsu, members of the Standing Committees of Ways and Means from the House. Also to Secretary of Finance and your staff, welcome to Tinian. OMB and T Vicky and your staff, welcome to Tinian. And especially to the folks that work behind the scene is the staff of the Legislative Bureau, welcome to Tinian. I am Edwin P. O'Donnell, the mayor of Tinian and Agiguan. I appreciate the opportunity to address you today, shedding lights on the critical budgetary needs and ongoing challenges that our office faces as we prepare for fiscal year 2026. To provide context, the Tinian Mayor's Office with full one hundred and forty-one employees manages a broad range of essential services that sustain both our community and our government operations. These responsibilities encompass operating the library, youth center, dog control, ID division, maintaining parks and tour recites, conducting building repairs, planning new projects, administering municipal scholarship programs, managing the slaughterhouse and municipal treasury, preparing for emergencies, and grant writing and management. Additionally, we support the Saipan Guest House, which serves as a military liaison and oversee planning and budgeting. In addition, we assist every state department and agencies on Tinian, including PSS, MVA, Tinian F C L, by providing personnel through memorandums of understanding. Without support, staff of the Mayor's Office, Tinian's local government would face serious operational disruptions. We also coordinate with autonomous agencies and serve as the vital link within the community and higher levels of government. I hope that providing this brief background gives you an understanding of the scope of our responsibilities, underscoring the importance of fully supporting and adequately staffing our office. First and foremost, I respectfully request that the legislature provide sufficient operating funding, operational funding for the Tinian Mayor's Office and all government agencies. These funds are vital so that we can sustain at a minimum the basic public services that our community depends on daily. Without adequate funding, essential services such as public safety, emergency response, and utilities are jeopardized, directly affecting the welfare of our residents. The second request that I would like to put forward before this committee is to consider not to suspend the hotel occupancy tax allocation for Tinian and Rota in fiscal year 2026 budget. Although public law twenty, that's one seven, currently mandates municipalities receive at least three hundred thousand annually from the hard funds. The upcoming twenty-six budget level should at the minimum allocate two hundred thousand per municipality. From December twenty twenty-three to June twenty twenty-five, Tinian received one hundred and fifty-three thousand. A sum insufficient to sustain municipal activities, necessitating additional financial support from agencies like OGM and MVA. This funding is critical for promoting tourism, supporting annual festivals, and maintaining contracts integral to sustaining our local economy. Third, I urge the legislature remove all suspended revolving funds allocated to the municipalities, such as those related to e-gaming and the developer's tax. These funds are critical for supporting ongoing programs and initiatives that benefit our communities. Spending or withholding these funds hamper our ability to deliver services and develop projects effectively. Furthermore, it is our position that the developer's tax should be assessed on all DOD-related projects. Public Law eight dash twenty-three, which implements the developer's tax clearly states, except as provided by subsection B. The United States and the Commonwealth Governments, their departments, agencies, and instrumentalities, but not to their contractors, are specifically exempt from any liability to pay any tax imposed by this division other than such tax required to be withheld from other person and paid over to the secretary. For the past two years, we have persistently requested that the Department of Finance and DPW assess this tax. Despite multiple letters to Secretary of DPW and Secretary of Finance, we have not yet received any response to our request for assessment. We have also consulted with Attorney General, who confirmed there are no legal obstacles that will hinder our ability to proceed with this assessment. We have also reached out to a special assistant of the Commonwealth Bureau of Military Affairs to bring this issue to light. Implementing this tax could generate significant revenue, not just for Tinian, but the entire scene. Providing much-needed funds to help mitigate the impacts of expanding DOD activities on our island. It is imperative that these agencies act swiftly to establish this revenue stream. Additionally, I urge the committee to allocate adequate funds for emergency situations. Ensuring financial resources are readily available to procure critical supplies and services promptly. Previous delays in vendor payment has seen after super typhoon U two highly highlight the necessity for advanced funds transfers, enabling swift and effective crisis response and recovery operations. Furthermore, I request consideration of Senate Bill twenty-three dash zero-eight, introduced by Senator Judith Hofshneider, which pertains to transferring the expenditure authority over solid waste management fund from the Secretary of DPW to the mayors of Tinian and Rota. As DOD exercises and infrastructure projects expand, effective waste management becomes increasingly critical. This legislation would empower us to address solid waste challenges more effectively, ensuring compliance with BECQ and EPA regulations. Finally, another urgent matter is needed to fully fund the overtime hours for all enforcement agencies, particularly the Department of Public Safety and the Department of Fire and Emergency Medical Services. Adequate overtime funding ensures that the government agency can utilize their personnel lapses. Should there be any shortfalls in funding essential operations needs, proper funding prevents these gaps from hampering other government departments' capacity to utilize their personnel lapses effectively, ensuring the continuation of ideal public service. In closing, I want to emphasize that the scope and responsibilities of the Tinian Mayor's Office are extensive. Our community's growth, driven by DOD presence and infrastructure projects, makes it more important than ever that we receive the support, funding, and authority necessary to operate effectively and efficiently. I thank you for your time, and I am available to ask questions from the members. Thank you again, Sisus Moss.
Thank you, Mayor, for your opening statement. On your budget request, there is a variance of fifty-nine thousand and sixty-seven dollars on fringe benefits with regards to your employees, your one hundred and forty-one employees. Although you still are given one hundred and forty-one employees, but can you expound with this variance with regards to your request? In the tune of fifty-nine thousand? I'll give that to Mr. Perez.
So the Mayor's Office, and I believe actually we have a hundred and thirty FTS as it currently stands. The other eleven FTS are not funded. But what happens is, you know, we're the biggest agency here on the island and personnel changes constantly. So when we submit to the time when we actually, the governor gets it to do his proposal, things change. So together with the governor's proposal, I believe, is the most current one, numbers that have been submitted through OMB. So I think that's what causes the variance, the difference from the time they're submitted. Because we submit the budget in February, the governor's proposal comes out at the end of March. So, you know, things change during that timeframe.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Perez. And Ms. V, maybe you wanna kind of enlighten the members on this fifty-nine variance versus the governor's proposal and the mayor's budget request?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good morning to everybody. So when the OMB receives the budget package from the municipality or from any other departments, we go into the system and verify the actual benefits that the employee is currently opting to. So we make an adjustments to the budget based on what's actual in the system versus what's being projected by the municipality.
Thank you for that clarification, Ms. V. My next question, Mayor, I know that your request for the public auditor at one percent fee is at fifty-two thousand, but the governor's budget proposal is at forty. So I guess my question also would be, maybe perhaps to Ms. V, are we meeting the mandate with the forty that under the governor's proposal versus the request at fifty-two from the mayor's office?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, yes, we are. The governor's proposal, the total four point zero seven five for the office of the mayor is what we calculated, the one percent on, not on what the mayor submitted.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. So at this time, I open now for questions to any member who has questions for the mayor. Let me recognize the Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mayor, and to your team for joining us this morning. Thank you for making yourself available and to the judicial branch, thank you for allowing us to utilize the judicial building this morning. And before we move on, we'd like to recognize our former Senator Henry San Nicolás. Thank you for joining us this morning. You're definitely not new to this budget process. But Mayor, with all the offices that are under your watch, how many total revolving accounts does the mayor have with these various offices?
So the Mayor's Office has two. We have the Tobacco Settlement Fund and our CDA Bond Interest Fund. Nothing is, the CDA bond interest doesn't increase, but there's still a balance there. DCCA has none, Finance has none, Commerce has one, DLNR, I believe, has two, DPW, I believe, has two, Fire has two, and DPS has one.
I will get to those guys now, but just the respective revolving account regarding CEDA, that's the one that's been suspended in the current budget?
No, CEDA is, that's existing money that was left over from the CDA bond interest that was done, I don't know, twelve, fifteen years ago. So we still have money in that account that we use.
The two thousand seven AMB, is that correct? That Tinian's share from the two thousand AMB?
Correct, that's correct.
How much is in that account?
Good question. We're still trying to figure out in terms of the reporting on Munis, because there's always an amount and then there's a negative amount, and we're trying to figure out what the actual balance is. So unfortunately, right now, I can't tell you the actual balance. Maybe either the secretary or OMB would be able to give that information better.
CEDA, so your CEDA office doesn't have that available for you guys? Because that's outside of?
Yeah, I think that would have to go up to the Saipan Office.
Saipan Office, okay, so then right now, you're reading negative?
Well, we're not really sure. Our staff's a little confused in terms of how to read the actual numbers. And luckily, we have Finance on island today, so, you know, I think we're going to go through some kind of training process to figure out exactly how to read.
How about the tobacco, how much is in that?
So again, I know that the way Munis comes out is you have a positive number, you have a negative number. If it nets out, our staff thinks there's like sixteen thousand available in that account, but there might be more.
All right, I guess that one we can ask Finance.
Right.
SOF, is that possible? Okay, so we'll get the numbers from them and hopefully they can provide the accurate numbers to you guys, so it's going to actually function moving forward. Mayor, sorry, on the, so I guess the, just to write off the first question of the chairman regarding the fifty-nine thousand variance between the requests and the proposal from the administration, and that's just based on fringe benefits, the fifty-nine thousand dollars?
Yeah, so when we submit our budget, if we have a vacant FTE, then obviously we put in benefits for, all the benefits for the employees, not knowing how they're going to opt. But then eventually, when they get hired, you know, some of them don't opt into the retirement fund, some of them don't opt into the insurance. So then eventually, OMB does an actual, and then that's what OMB will put into the governor's proposal.
Sure, and I think that's the biggest challenge for all the departments and line item agencies, because open enrollment for insurance is in November, right? So we always try to shoot at the highest option and I guess to make sure that they have that right to apply for the highest option. But with the fifty-nine thousand variance though, is that still at the same amount of employees at one thirty?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. All right, I used my time for now, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Mayor, I know in your opening statement, you did mention about utilities. And we can see it here that your budget request for utilities at three hundred eighty-four thousand, but the governor's proposal is at two hundred fifty. So there is, are there any way you can work around the two hundred fifty? Is that very, with the two hundred fifty, with the governor's proposal for utilities?
Chairman, maybe, because strictly our understanding with Finance, when we last met, we made sure that those offices that have prepaid are a priority for the two fifty. And then, and then in lieu of the shortfall for three hundred thousand that we were requesting, that would have to be going through reprogramming.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Any member has questions for the mayor? Recognize the floor leader.
Tess, hello, can you guys hear me? So Mayor, you mentioned something about, good morning, before I forget, and then I'll get in trouble later. Good morning, everybody, thank you for coming. Thank you to the judiciary for providing the venue for us to hold this meeting and to the staff that's here to provide a support. And of course, I see your cabinet with you, so it's nice to see you guys here. You mentioned that, just going off from the Vice Chairman, you had two special, identified special funds or revolving accounts, is that correct? Two that you know of?
No, so actually, we have more, but some of them have been suspended.
Okay.
Right, so the only active ones right now is the settlement fund, the Anti-Tobacco Settlement Fund, which every year, I believe, were allocated fifty-four thousand, according to the budget law. The other revolving funds is obviously e-gaming, which we're asking the legislature not to suspend it this year. Developer's tax is another one that is usually suspended, and that was what the mayor mentioned on his remarks about trying to find a way to assess the DOD contractors for the developer's tax. And then aside from that was the CDA bond interest, which no additional money is put into that account, but that's just an account that we had a balance in, that we were able to spend on.
May I shed light on the CEDA account? You know, this is an account that has been existing for years. It has been allocated previously to do the mortgage. And then we found money from CDPG. So then we just put that aside, and whenever we appropriated this thing. Now we come to find out that it's different from when we got that money. The form of payment has to be, you spend upfront and CDA will reimburse you. So how on the hell we gonna pick up projects when we know we're broke? We cannot front money now for projects, more projects, and then get reimbursed at the till end? So that's, I guess CEDA made a new policy or federal regulation that they're guiding themselves on how to disburse this money. So we start with that money. For the last two years, we gave some money for the court, for this court, to do some, you see, all the chimneys are broken. And the court is also confused, because that was during JP, maybe JP's time when they gave that money, when they obligated that money, fifty thousand to at least put in to start doing some repairs on this building. They haven't spent a dime since U two, six years later. Because the ongoing backgoing, and we met with Secretary, both OMB and Secretary, and we have to go back to CEDA and ask them to, you know, how can we unfasten this stringent hold on how to spend this money? Because it's been there since I was in the legislature, in nineteen and twenty. So I guess now it's twenty-one, twenty-five, twenty-four? So.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, and I'm sorry, I sent your frustration. I think even the Third Senatorial District is going through some frustrations. But as they mentioned, luckily, OMB is here and Secretary of Finance, and I'm sure you guys will have a moment together at some point. We'll be here for two days, so I just wanted to seek a little bit of clarity there. I noticed that there are several funding sources, and I'm gonna stick just to the mayor. You had, I guess, on your, you have some FTEs that are vacant, that have been dollared, placed a dollar amount, so it's there for your office. And these are mayor's department assistants, right? What is, will you be placing them to support other agencies as well, or is this strictly just for the mayor's office? Because you assist a lot of people, just listening to your speech, you kind of like are all leveraging each other, so I'm just asking.
Yes, because I'll give you one example. I think I used this last year, but it was really perfect example from staff that I had in NMC and then now in Commerce that are being, from what you say, MOU, to now being fully civil service employees. And that is really what the intent is between this MOU, between us and some of the agencies. And we're not restricted to just the departments. It also goes to autonomous agencies. Right now, I have like four at PSS. And if we take them four out, you would have only one admin officer administering, administering the junior high, the recently emerged elementary and junior high and the high school. Four staffs I have there. If they all, if I recall all of them, there's only one admin officer.
So they're not supported by PSS budget?
Yes, they are, but they're, I guess, you can interpret it the way you want to do it, no? But I just want to make sure, there's something like that that come. And, you know, I have a good, we have a good relationship with PSS. And when they ask, and these are the FTEs that I have, we push them over to just make sure that they're taking care. And I hope that down the line, they can, they can start, you know, moving money for making them be a part of the PSS family as civil service employees.
Okay, and I was gonna get to the MOU and MOA employees. So how many existing total number of MOU or MOA employees do you have? Cross districts?
We're gonna have to come back to you and give you an answer by this afternoon. We just need to ask one of our HRs to just punch the number and they'll show us.
Okay, and that would be beneficial, only because, and what are their funding sources? Do these come out of the mayor, or how are they paid?
It's from the mayor's budget.
Because I've seen what this MOU and MOA looks like, and there's no language that includes the sub-account numbers or what account to charge. So I like to, I want to get a feel of who's really paying that person and what funding source is it coming from? Because it's not clear in the MOU and MOA. And the reason why I'm asking that, Mayor, is because when you have these kinds of, I guess, temporary employment, if that's what you want to call it, I'm not sure if that's even allowed, but I think it was a practice since nineteen eighty. And so my biggest concern with that is, number one, I don't see any protections on the human resource side, right? They're pretty much disposed of when you just decide to dispose them. And I don't think that's a fair shot at anyone trying to gain employment and build their resumes, right? It's pretty much almost like a political hire, if you ask me.
It is.
And that's the kind of stuff we need to get away from, right? We need to either build capacity, provide the funding, and build on their, what they can provide, right? You as far as value. And so can you just get back to me on that? And then I'd also, I I'd like to know that because when you're talking about money, you know, where do we allocate this, right? Do we give it to the mayor or do we give it to the other person and let them draw down? Because now there's a an agreement between you, an office, and another office. So I just, it's not showing anywhere, right? And I'd like to see where that's gonna pick up and where it's gonna show. Because on the document itself, it doesn't say, it just says, you're gonna be here. And thank you for your service and you're done. But I don't know who's paying for it, no?
You can, I'll 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 give that to this guy, before I get in trouble and say something that I'm not supposed to say. No, no, between us two, between me and him, you're gonna say, you shouldn't say that, Mayor.
No, so to answer your question, all the MOUs are paid for by the mayor's office.
Okay.
They're all mayor's office FTEs.
Okay.
You know, over the last twenty years in in government, you know, we've always advocated for increasing the FTEs under the departments and and giving them the opportunity to have a civil service job and build their resume and everything like that. Unfortunately, a lot of times when funds are pulled back, a lot of the legislatures in the past don't opt to go that direction. If if that's, if the legislature wants to look at that, then yes, definitely. And like the mayor said, because we put them in the departments and they need these positions because a lot of the departments don't have these vacant positions, then when the positions do open up, then we have somebody who's already qualified to fit into that position.
Okay, so I'm I'm just gonna take the assumption that the eleven vacant would be MOU if it's not funded.
So the eleven vacant, they're dollar funded.
Right, I see that.
They won't be filled unless a funding source is identified. And a lot of times, you would have to have an outside funding source to come in. So before, when there was ARPA money or there's some some other kind of, you know, let's say you could use one of your revolving funds. Then that's when you would fill those. So a lot of times, these positions have been in there for the last two or three years. They've never been filled. In the possibility of them being some kind of outside funding would be available, then we could fund those positions.
Okay.
But the chances are, I don't I don't know if these fun positions will be funded in twenty-six.
Okay, thank you. And then I guess one last question before I yield my time and give someone else. Do you have a special account, Mayor? No? Okay, um, let me.
For you, I I wanna say this. Couple times we've talked about this, never get out, but I just, I wanna make sure the people know that if he if 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 you guys initiate to create the FTEs, who's just lateral transfer them? You know, the best thing that you can do for a person is when you give them a job that they don't have to come every two years and look at somebody and beg or ask to be make sure that it's been considered. You give them that power, that's the best thing. And I've I've done it previously and I've seen people to this day that have come and say, you know, Mayor, thank you very much. Thank you. And they're still beside me, they're still supporting me. But the best thing that you can do is to make, give him a job that don't have to report to somebody every two years. You know what I'm talking about? So if you create a position, who'll lateral transfer?
I agree with you, Mayor, I I think that that's the best thing. And I think we all feel that sentiment. We're we're struggling in the third senatorial district as well. And you have a lot of autonomy here and authority to provide to your people. So I can I can understand and empathize. I think that's it, I yield my time until the second round. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Representative Marisa Flores. Mayor, on your opening statement, you spoke about solid waste. And I know I sit with many meetings with you, with the stakeholders, with, you know, the military buildup. And I know that they are also assisting the municipality. How is that going on, those development? I mean, the reason why I ask is that it's very important that we have Tinian's landfill up to EPA standards. So that perhaps the municipality can be assessing some tipping fees that could result into revolving funds that could assist also the municipality in that matter. So can you expound on the developments and with the assistance of the military as well in helping you get to that standard, perhaps?
Thank you, thank you, Chairman. So so every three months, we get to executive meetings with the stakeholders, with DOD and the elected officials and the agencies that are involved with the buildup of the military. So at this point, I would say that the land is already been 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 transferred. Or it's going to be transferred to DPL. Okay, so so the papers are being worked through the lawyers. And 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 I'm hoping that we resolve that this year. Because really, building that landfill is not gonna happen during my my term. Maybe within ten years, that's what they're saying, no? So at the same, at the meantime, we are applying for municipal, small municipal permit with EPA, so then it can allow us to accept this trash and then do a tipping fee on it. And to also to avail grants to to make sure that that this now identified small municipal exemption landfill is meets EPA. So then we can start tipping. But we have, we had the the honor to meet one of EPA's high ranking member from headquarters. Her first name is Caroline. She was just here like last Friday, going around and looking at some of the stuff that we have. And we brought up some concerns to their to their door. And then they're 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 trying to help us also, try to mitigate and fast track using up the Asada funds that's still sitting there. By now, maybe it's forty million dollars some. I don't know, but it's really, it's really being spent, but the bigger picture is not really being addressed. These are all just thought, these designs and and professional people that come in play to to try and help us out. But where I told them that we need to have another source to actually be used to address that infrastructure part. Because we are really using up that money very fast.
Right, thank you for that update for the the committee. And your opening statement further asked and you're practically asking this committee to support twenty-three oh eight for solid waste. Is that a, you said it's a senate bill? Did it pass already the senate or because it seems like this is last legislature's proposed legislation that deals with solid waste?
That's the that's the bill for to transfer the authority, the expenditure authority from Secretary of DPW to the
To the municipality.
Municipality, the mayor's, let me make it, if 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 the the people that are working here, the dumb knows better what they're doing and what they need. Not somebody up in Saipan who barely comes down here. And and Ray, Secretary and I are okay, you know, we're we're good. But when you have a flat tire that is two thousand some dollars worth. You going to procurement and all these things is gonna take time. But the director here and then Secretary of Finance and they can do it. Gas every day, diesel every day, it has to go to the secretary for approval, come on.
Okay, so that
It it doesn't have to be me, it can be the director of Public Works. But the authority needs to be divested and and given to the people that are here running the program.
And these employees under solid waste are, some of them under
DPW Tinian, they are under DPW.
Other DPW Tinian, none of them are
I mean, they report to the office, but it's still expenditures, Ray. Secretary of DPW.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Are there any further question from the members? Let me recognize the vice chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I think Mayor know that that's the one that's been suspended, that went down from ten percent to seven percent. I think it was being interpreted the wrong way. It was supposed to add an additional three percent that's supposed to go to the to the Cancer Association. And then the remaining money was supposed to go to the to the respective municipalities. And that has been suspended. I think we introduced a legislation that to add an additional three percent to go back to ten percent so that at least some municipalities can tap into that three percent. I think that's something that we can, we can definitely, I I know that I introduced the bill to get back to ten percent. There's amendments made by the senate. We were good with the amendments, excepted kind of increase the percentage. And I told them, it's like we can't do that, DPW is gonna go after us. But you had mentioned about the reprogramming authority. At this point, you you're at a hundred percent reprogramming authority or at fifty percent?
So actually, that was one of our requests also. I believe I'm we're at ten percent, to be perfectly honest with you. So our argument is this, in in the in the last fiscal year budget, the legislature granted the governor a hundred percent reprogramming authority. We were asking if that would flow down to the municipalities. Unfortunately, it didn't. So we were, we have to request. So I think one time, we had to ask the the governor, at that time was the lieutenant governor, to grant that assistance to the municipality, which they granted. But then if I'm not mistaken, I think that was interpreted as a one-time approval. So now we're back, if I'm not mistaken, and OMB would be able to clarify. I think we're back down to the ten percent reprogramming authority. But but the argument here is this, if you take a look at the entire budget, and let's say for the example with the mayor's office. You know, in in the mayor's office budget that's in front of you, we only have nine thousand dollars for operation. So obviously, we can't run the municipality with nine thousand dollars. And I think that might be a typo with with office rental. I think that need was supposed to be the total office rental amount. Because one of the requests that we made was, we have to have all the office rental accounts in the operating budget in order for it to go through procurement. Because within in the absence of that, we have to process the office rental payments on an IPO basis, which of course procurement won't approve. So then we get into that whole issue. But without having the money budgeted, then procurement won't approve the contract. So we're kind of like caught. So one issue that we need to do is we need to adjust the mayor's office rental to take it to our current rental amount. But then back to the reprogramming authority, yes. If 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 all of the departments are heavily weighted on personnel and then depending upon what funds are lapsed, that they could take it down to operations. We have to make sure that we have the full amount to reprogram down. In the absence of that, it it's not functional, it it won't work.
And that's only on the budget, though? On the local funds that being appropriate to the mayor's office, you're given the ability to reprogram up down?
Right, but right now, only at ten percent, according to the Planning and Budgeting Act. We're asking that if the legislature grants one hundred percent to the governor, then that hundred percent reprogramming authority should be extended down to municipalities.
That's what I'm saying, though, it's only it's only restrictive to the to the budget. The local appropriations, those are flexible with their ability to move up and down, right?
Correct, that's correct.
Okay. Sorry, I know that we, floor leader, mentioned regarding these positions that are MOUs. I guess we'll get to labor down the down the road in this hearing. Maybe something that we can do is work through the WIA program to to take over at least six months, up to one year. And then we can start transferring that. But we'll get to to your labor, and this is not not fair to you guys to be answering this right now. But we'll get to the Department of Labor when we get to that. Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Vice. Are there any members for the first round? Let me recognize Representative Julie Oggo.
Thank you, Chairman, and welcome to the budget hearing, Mayor Aldon, and to your staffs. And to your chief of staff, Alan Paris. So I was just curious because I just also introduced the bill for that construction surtax. And I believe C Rep San Nicolas introduced this bill, House Local Bill twenty-three dash fifty-four, which passed end of last year, and it became the local law twenty-three dash twenty-two. And in that provision, the Secretary of Finance is supposed to create a special account for this surtax. I'm I'm just wondering, is there, have have there been a collection in this special account for the second senatorial district?
Thank you for the question, Rep Oggo. I believe the system needs to be developed to to collect and actually assess the tax. And when that is completed at that time, then the account will be open. So we have not collected yet until the the system has been finalized for the actual collection.
So because this was passed late last year, would that be a retro or is there a retro on this? Or or just when you establish that count?
When a tax law is passed, it is only moving forward from the effective date of the law. Unless specified by the statute itself.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Rep Oggo. Are there any members for the first round? I recognize Representative Joe Flores.
Hello, Mayor. You mentioned regarding, this is regarding utilities, for utility that you were mentioning about prepaid. How many department under prepaid?
No, I I think almost all of our apartment departments have some prepaid.
How how does the prepaid work? How how's how's that system work within the department for a prepaid?
Oh, I I think it works great. I mean, obviously, prepaid benefits everyone because, you know, one, keep the lights on. If you don't pay, it goes off. So we we take the two hundred fifty thousand, we prioritize our prepaid's. And we even try and do a little bit of advanced payment, just in case. The postpaid are the ones that are a little bit more challenging.
So this is our problem regarding the prepaid, because we have other agencies that are complaining because sometimes the shot of power just shuts off and they need to go somebody to
Yeah, so so certain departments, so like, for example, DPS. I think DPS right now, and they'll they'll testify when they come up, I think they're still on postpaid. So that was one of the issues that we had, I think, labor. So when when we had the fiscal year, I think it was twenty-four, when the municipality didn't have any utilities. And then some of our departments were shutting off, like the aging shut off, labor shut off, I think finance shut off, and DPS shut off. So then those were the ones that were the most challenged. So what we do is we basically focus on all the prepaid's, get all those paid. And then if there's any money left over, so we're coming up to the end of the fiscal year, we know what our balance is. So as we get closer to the end of the fiscal year, we'll prepaid, we'll take care of all the prepaid's to the end of the fiscal year. And whatever's left over, we'll push it to the postpaid.
Okay, okay, I think it's gonna be a problem, but assuming I have it fixed, thank you.
Thank you, Rep Flores. Let me recognize the Secretary of Finance in addition to that question.
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Mayor, I know on the last time we met with the delegations, I mentioned about the MOU that we are currently negotiating with CUC. We included the municipalities to include the arrears. And for the municipality of Tinian, we included a hundred and fifty thousand five hundred forty-five to be cleared with the MOU. And that was for the reason of encouraging more transition to prepaid. Because CUC has a policy that if there is an arrears, they will not entertain a prepaid transition. So with that in place, CUC agreed that they will allow any government account to transition because we have an MOU that is going through the process. So I do see a current balance of three hundred and forty-four thousand for, that's after September thirty, twenty twenty-four. That amount has not been included in the MOU. The amounts that were included were only as of September thirty, twenty twenty-four. So again, what I noticed in our hearing in ROTA was that they have some MOUs with autonomous agencies, which again is not included in the central government MOU. We don't include arrears from CPA or PSS. The arrears is specifically for the municipality only. So just to keep that in mind as we prepare for the status conference with Judge Carter. Thank you.
Thank you, Secretary. And Mayor, if you have further questions to the Secretary on that matter?
I'm 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 supposed to, I guess I'm supposed to meet with the new SAA in regarding one of our our offices in Saipan. Is that included in the?
If you're referring to Valley Inn, yes, it is included for the arrears to be cleared. We need to provide a status update to the court on how the municipalities are working with Saipan and the SAA's office to assign the costs moving forward. I think that should be sufficient for the court. However, I I can't speak for the judge. They might call you in to explain how the municipalities use and plan to maintain the office's utilities.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you. Any members for the first round? If not, I recognize the floor leader, again, floor leader.
Thank you, Chairman. Mayor, I noticed that you have a repair in
Mayor, I noticed that you have a repair and maintenance, uh, that you had requested for twenty-four thousand dollars in your proposal. And then that was decreased. They took it away. Um, is this for vehicles? Is this for maintenance of air conditioning systems? What is this repair and maintenance for? Because obviously, one of the things we fail to do is have a repair and maintenance plan, therefore, uh, costing the coffers even more money when we don't take care of our, um, purchases, especially cars, you know, air conditioning systems. So, what is this repair and maintenance, uh, of twenty-four thousand? Because you put it on your twenty-twenty-six request, twenty-four thousand, and then they took it out. The governor didn't give you anything. So what is this cover?
I believe, uh, uh, some of those are, 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 are vehicles. Because, uh, we haven't had, uh, purchased any vehicle for the mayor's officer for the last, Alan?
No.
Even before you too. The only, from the mayor's officer, the only vehicles they gave us was, uh, one from OGM. That's it? We, we have not purchased any vehicles.
Okay, so...
And so, I'm starting to get leftover cannibalized vehicle from DPS. TPW. DPL. Uh, I don't know if I ever got from CPA. NMC. You stop grant vehicles that are four-year-old, five-year-old. Give it to me, so then I start buying parts. Just to have to be able to have cars.
Okay, so your repair and maintenance is strictly just for cars, not for air conditioning, air conditioning systems, nothing like that?
No.
No maintenance whatsoever on any other stuff? Is that included in your rental?
No.
I don't think the mayor takes care of the day-to-day. But, um, our repair and maintenance is, is so broad. I mean, we have two special divisions. One's our special project division, um, that goes around and actually, uh, maintains structures. Now, I know you're probably gonna ask DPW, you know, that function should be theirs, but unfortunately, it falls on us. And then you have the maintenance, which is the ground maintenance, which is so extensive, um, it's practically the whole island, and some of the autonomous agencies when they request our assistance. So for Tinian, repair and maintenance is so broad. Air conditionings, yes. Um, if some of the departments, uh, when they, when they're not funded, and they need assistance, then we jump in and we help them. So it could be both ground maintenance, it could be building maintenance, um, it could be repair of facilities. Everything eventually comes to the mayor's office for a solution.
Okay, um, yeah, that seems to be the problem also in the third senatorial district. The mayor carries a lot of the burdens. So, I guess, Mayor, if I could just, you know, everything that I see is really just basically a summary. I don't get a copy of your, um, narrative, right, as to, and that's why we have these questions that we ask, because we see it in summary form, but we don't really see it in your packet. So, I guess my question is, um, you know, aside from public safety, you know, one of the things that I'm really, really going to support is the repair and maintenance, because that seems to always give us a higher, um, liability for the year. So if you could kind of maybe, um, give me more information on that, because then that way we can support your ask, right? I'm looking at this, and I'm just seeing numbers. I don't, I don't know what it does, but if it's essential for the, uh, people of Tinian, um, to continue with that service, then that makes sense, right? I mean, why are we gonna zero fund you when they rely on you to do everything, right? But repairs and maintenance is what I'm more concerned about, because you're talking about systems, you're talking about, you know, maybe, uh, Department of Finance computers, you know, those things should be all packaged in your repair and maintenance plans. All those forecasts for like, the contract of the, the, the air con system that needs to be fixed, right? You factor all of that in, and then we have an understanding of where this money goes so that you don't have to go to procurement. It's already all in there. It's all factored in, and you pay in advance, in a sense. So, if you could give me that, um, that would be great for me, so...
Some of these are like, like, one example. Just last month and a half ago, uh, Dylanor Codeen, that building is supposed to be condemned. That building host, I think the, uh, uh, the municipal council's still there, the veterans' offices is still there, the Dylanor Operations will, uh, or Admin and, and Fish Wildlife and Livestock is still there. And this was, uh, 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 damaged during the storm, six years ago. And they're supposed to leave the building, but where are they gonna go? All these offices? They don't even have money for rental. They don't even have money for their gas. And where they gonna go? So we started, the, the electrical systems are bouncing because now you have the, the tubes, all the electrical being, the, uh, a fuzzy, the water goes into them. Then the, the sewer, I guess, was backing up. So, we have a staff who's electrician, there's plumber, so we use some of our funds to go on and mitigate those kind of situations, you know? Fix the electrical, plug the, those holes that are, the water are coming in, you know? For the meantime, while the bigger problem is, now the award went out for them to fix the, the entire Butler Building. Now where they gonna go? They're not budgeted to rent for the next six months, or even duration of the, of the project. Nine months or seven months for them to look for an office so they can seek shelter for the meantime while the whole building is fixed? I would try to, to ask the, the contractor if you can partial building, like, everybody just, you know, like a shark went in and all the fish went this side. So then the shark, you know, you start fixing this side of the building, and then when it's done, you move them this way, and then you... But, uh, the, the last time I checked, they said they can't. It has to be one time, everything stripped down, repaired, replaced, and...
Yeah. And, you know, I thank you for that, Mayor, and I guess that's where I'm getting at, right? Is, is just this planning, right? I mean, you can already forecast what your twenty-twenty-six is gonna look like based on your budget proposal, right? You're looking at all your departments here that have specific needs to do their job, right? So I guess for, just for the mayor, um, if we could see what that looks like these for repairs and maintenance, because that's, I don't think twenty-four thousand is enough, to be honest, right? And then that goes, so if I could see that, Mayor, that would be great, right? Because then that, the advocacy changes. It changes from, what is this tires and something to bigger things such as, um, this particular example that you used. So, Mr. Perez, one more question. You said rental office, that might have been a typo. The governor's proposal says nine thousand forty-eight. Is this supposed to be ninety thousand?
Ninety-six thousand.
Ninety-six thousand?
Right.
Okay. So, how many buildings, how many office spaces?
We're just all in that one building.
That one building? Oh, so that pays for the whole year?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Ayew.
Thank you, Representative Marissa Flores. Are there any other questions from the members? Recognize Representative Julie Oggo.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, Mayor? Mayor, so I noticed here a rental of vehicles of twenty-eight thou, your request in twenty-eight thousand eight hundred. What, uh, vehicles are these? Is this, uh, one of those, uh, like the Lason, maybe?
Both things.
How many van, or how many vehicles do you guys have, two? And is this like, uh, yearly, the twenty-eight thousand eight hundred? Okay. And I noticed that, um, in the past, I guess, two, three years, uh, it's, it's showing that there was no request. Was that funded through ARPA? Or how was that, uh, what was the source of, uh, funding for that?
Yes, in the first two years, we did it with what, available ARPA funds.
Okay, and, and that's zeroed out already?
That's zeroed out.
So that's why you're asking for the twenty-eight thousand? All right, thank you. Ayew.
Thank you, Representative Julie Oggo. Are there any other questions from the members? If there is no further question, uh, Mayor and Mr. Perez, we really thank you guys for coming before the committee. And, uh, with that, Mayor, I'll give you the last words, uh, before we, uh, continue on to the, uh, next, uh, item B, which is the Tinian Municipal Council. Mayor, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. You know, uh, uh, everybody, uh, knows that, uh, Tinian is in, in, in a very, uh, special circumstances, no? Despite what's the region or what our economy is, no? Uh, Tinian continues to move up in so many various, various, uh, uh, project. And, you know, we, we have to stay focused. We have, in our plate now, an opportunity for within the next fifteen years, fifteen to twenty years, we can, we can, we can have this build-up, uh, uh, to our advantage also. Because this is what we wanted. Our forefathers that negotiated this, this, this covenant saw this thing. But I was, I would admit that we weren't ready for this big build-up at one time. We were expecting this negotiated opportunity between the military and our forefathers was gradually expanded, no? And then annually activities, and that was it. That was it. That was the last thirty plus some years, it was just the military coming out here. They jump out from a, from a flying, you know, they do the jumps, and then they go in the boonies and do shooting and whatever, and that was it. Once a year, for three, three weeks. But now we have, we have a four-hundred-million-dollar project, and it's still climbing, which is the divert. We have a four-hundred-and-nine-million-dollar Northview project, which is still climbing again. And then you have the CGMT estimated at about three-hundred-million dollars, and they're not ready yet because they just asked for an extension for recruiter decision to include the operations of, of, of IBB, no? And then you have the dock and, uh, and the marine, either big water, which is estimated at five-hundred-million. Now they're saying it's seven-hundred-million dollars. So we cannot just let this thing fly in and build everything, and we just pretend that nothing happened, and we're not gonna grasp. Man, we, we can make a lot of money out of this thing. We can. You know, it's not gonna be forty-million dollars each year, but twenty million from this type of tax, twenty million from this type of, of entry permit or whatnot, you know? And, 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 and they'll pay for it. They'll pay for it. Don't be afraid that they're, they're gonna fly away, no? DoD has a blank check. Uh, what do you call that? Card? The black card that they swipe? They can go up to Ace Hardware here and finish everything in there with one small card. They, they, and they don't wanna do that. But we need to start giving opportunities to our folks, too. We need to open up, open up opportunities. Let them take the leap of faith. Let them borrow. CDA needs to step up. CDA needs to push out money, man. We've been banking those money for so many years, no? My chance to total, empty, lack news is a lot piece on my chance. My sample, my mentality, my doctor, but he's making money. You know? A lot of them are coming from the outside because our entrepreneurs are not being spread out. They think it hurts to total. Come on, thank you, it's not so good. It's a piss, yeah, we're multi-tax. You know? See, I must, I'm a star, you know, that? And, and, and that's, that's my belief, nah, nah, uh, we need to put everybody in one room. That the thing is, put this, this, that's my economy. When, when we say, see, I'm in a small economy. Look, uh, in a small economy, you know, it's a, don't close it, it's a... So even if you allocate, you know, a contract out of, out of, out of any of these DoD contractor to a small entrepreneur, twenty thousand, nah, nah, contract, nah, all you need to do is just buy me four inches of boats, not some boats. That's all. But I'll give you twenty thousand every month if you, whatever the amount, no? It's, that's a contract that is local, and it's, it's pure, hundred percent local entrepreneur. Push out. There's a lot of contracts that are not being furnished out, frost out to us, but we need to make the, the, the demand for DoD, to the contractor, to the subcontract, subcontract, to the subcontractor, to make sure, before they go, they go to Guam, or they go to Hawaii, just to buy water, to bring in. That was a messed-up scenario, but it was real. It was true. How in the hell did you get water from Hawaii to bring out, out here? New Guahan, when three, four water, water, water bottling company? We have one here, they can provide that. But they didn't, they didn't do the contractor, subcontractor, they didn't do a thorough review of how, where he can get all of this. But it's in the website. We have people that know, but we need to push them and make them aware, and, and... Uh, I hope that, Chairman, when we get the chance again to sit down with them, I guess tomorrow again, uh, we are having the executive leadership meeting. Uh, there's a lot of things that we're gonna have to push.
Yes.
And I ask that, think about, um, the military buildup. It's not for Tinian, it's for us. But we all need to work together to, to start getting money out of that. Because man, everywhere else, uh, they do that to the military and the contractors.
Right. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, your committee, always means, look forward to work with you, uh, in the very many future, uh, many meetings, uh, in the future. I know that, uh, you and I, we sit on this stakeholder, uh, meeting, as well as, uh, the floor leader, uh, sits also on these, uh, meetings. And we need to push, and push our people so, uh, to go into entrepreneurship and take advantage of this money flowing from the military buildup. And, uh, uh, you're right, uh, it's, it, every senatorial district that, that, uh, builds up its economy, we, we all benefit as a whole cinema, and we look forward to help the second senatorial in this endeavor. Thank you, Mayor, and, uh, we are in, we, uh, short recess, five minutes, uh, so that we can have the municipal council, uh, ready and available. Short recess. We are back of, in our budget hearing session. And, uh, before, next before us, uh, uh, is the Tinian Municipal Council. And, uh, this time we recognize, uh, Vice Chair Mary Sanikulas. And I, I think I saw Secretary, uh, Stephen Caber to with us here. So with that, uh, Vice Chair, I give you, uh, the floor for your opening statement.
Good morning, Chairman Sablon and members of this august body. For the record, my name is Anna Marie Sanikulas and I, and I am the acting chairperson for the twenty of Tinian Municipal Council. Here with me today is Secretary Stephen P. Caber of the twenty of Tinian Municipal Council and our executive director, Mr. George Mendiola. And along with our admin officer, Kaya Lazaro. We would like to take this opportunity to thank each and every one of you for allowing us to testify for the twenty of Tinian Municipal Council fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget submission. This budget reflects our dedication to maintaining financial stability while making sure we continue to fulfill the needs and expectations for all the people we serve. Every question you have will be addressed and answered to the best of our ability. We look forward to discussing our priorities and demonstrating how this budget fits our goals and objectives for the future. Once more, we'd like to thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, uh, Chair, uh, for your opening statement. Um, to begin, uh, the Chair would like to, uh, uh, ask, uh, you guys still have, uh, seven employees under the municipal council, right?
Yes, sir.
Are any of those, uh, positions vacant at this moment?
As of right now, no, sir. Everything is filled.
Okay. Thank you. So, uh, again, uh, maybe this, uh, question, uh, goes out to, uh, Ms. Vee. I can see that there's, uh, a bit, uh, variance of, uh, four thousand with regards to fringe benefits versus, uh, the municipal council's, uh, request and the governor's proposal. Uh, so maybe, uh, maybe you can shed light to the committee, uh, if, uh, the ones, uh, that, that reflects under the governor's proposal is, uh, enough already to handle this fringe benefits.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, yes, again, um, you know, similar to how the mayor's calculation, OMB had to adjust because there were additional, other additional, uh, employees that opted into, you know, certain fringe benefits and others that have not participated. So OMB adjusts the budget, uh, calculation for fringe benefits.
Thank you, Ms. Vee, for that clarification on record. I now open up, uh, the floor for any member who has questions for the Tinian Municipal Council. Recognize the floor leader.
Hi, Ms. Muni. How are you today?
I'm good.
I only have, I'm good. I only have one question. You have, um, the governor's proposal, your proposal for three thousand dollars. Uh, and the governor's under contributions and donations, what is that for exactly?
Congresswoman, to answer you, any contributions and donations? Isn't that my, my, my sin, the public to help? And honestly, when it does that budget, right? So most of the time, no. When you not, my, my, little, but the song, I need public, no, this, this is a lot of stuff. Which is, it's true. But at the same time, no. How many council, we tried our best to help them, even without money, getting any government to help us. And most of the time, when we think it's am do, sometimes we help out of our own pocket money. Just to a PC, probably. So if I can see, we'll talk about. I'll do them, did it, Missa?
Ms. Vee, just so then a follow-up question. So this, for like your donations as an agency with like water for funeral expenses, all the cultural and traditional kind of requests?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you guys have a special account that you know of?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Uh, that's it for me.
Thank you, uh, Marisa Flores. Are there any other, uh, question from the members? Um, Madam Chair, uh, with regards to, to, uh, the utilities, uh, it is the mayor that, uh, that pays for you guys' utilities at your office, is that correct?
Actually, sir, the Department of Dillonar.
Oh, okay, because you're housing in the Department of Dillonar, so, uh, there, uh, that, that is the reason why you, you don't, there's no request for utilities, that's correct? This is the, the, the building that the mayor said that you guys are housing with, uh, Dillonar, okay?
Senor.
So clarified. Any other questions from the members? Okay, uh, let me, uh, recognize, uh, Representative Bijaya Tofor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, uh, thank you, Madam Chair, for joining us this morning and to your director. Uh, the, are the, is the municipal council currently, uh, receiving any external funds via grants or any other types of funding source outside of the, uh, the general appropriation or the, the delegation appropriations?
No, sir.
Does, does it need to be, the direct grant assistance, but am do?
No, sir.
Okay, the, the ARPA, all the ARPA funds that were, were given to municipality extended to you guys? And those funds are depleted already, or at least obligated?
They pagano mento taza.
Pago? Okay, alright, thank you.
Any further questions? Uh, recognize, uh, Representative Marisa Flores, floor leader. Oh, are there any, uh, other questions for the Tinian Municipal Council members? If there is no further, uh, uh, questions for Tinian Municipal Council, uh, Madam Chair, we thank you and your staff for, uh, coming before us and, uh, answering our questions. And I'll give you the, the last, uh, words, uh, statement before we go to the next, uh, department. You have the floor.
Para todo saben, so, por favor. Si eso es más sin, you know, I am missing opportunity. Look, I just, por favor, be, be what's up. She may be for my same question.
Por, por favor.
To the EOMB, is it for a one K? The governor's office, my guide, my dear book. Look, what I give you, please, under for a one K, the man do pago, so?
Being, being verified, talu, un diarii. And then, uh, we'll see what we can do with, uh, current appropriations. Maybe, uh, if there are any lapses for the municipal council, then we can reprogram to, to, um, accommodate. Actually, we don't even have to reprogram because it's a lump sum budgeting. And that lump sum, if it gave you fifty thousand for, for example, if they gave you fifty thousand for personnel, then it's covered within the fifty thousand.
Alright. As long as we cover, para zim, uno na empleao. No, thank you. Talun by. Si eso es más, si para todo saben, ni pinatun, ni so. Then you opportunity, I know, I am, I have fantastic, but I wanna hold on. Talun by, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and to your staff who are here before us. Okay, next on our, uh, order of business, we have the Department of Finance. And, uh, I believe there are some folks from the Department of Finance as well as the divisions, uh, part of it. So can we have, uh, we have, uh, RD here. Uh, and then, uh, if you guys wanna join biosecurity, please, uh, come forward. Thank you, Adyen, uh, Director, for being here before us. And, uh, at this time, I give you, uh, the floor for your opening statement.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to Tinian. Mister Chairman and members of this committee and Secretary of Finance Tracy and OMB Ms. Vicky and your team, thank you, everyone. My name is Melissa Mendiola and I am the resident director for the Department of Finance here in Tinian. Joining me this morning are some of the officers in charge of some of the divisions under the Department of Finance. Mister Chairman, as you and the committee members have reviewed the department's budget submission before today, I would like to, I, I would like to request if we may begin and go over each division in numerical order of, um, organization quotes, beginning with the procurement and, uh, procurement services.
Yes, go ahead, please proceed.
So we begin with procurement services, there are two current FTEs. This, um, supply technician one, the RFPA is currently at the governor's office. So it will be filled, um, hopefully anytime soon.
So you are saying that the, the position is, uh, the papers are in route for two fields, uh, they can position at the moment?
Okay.
Okay, you may proceed.
One issue I wanna bring up under procurement services is for personnel insurance. As you can see, um, there is no amount given by the governor's proposal. And that's the only issue I have for procurement services. No, um, amount given for, uh, personnel insurance.
Yes, we see that reflective that, uh, you have requested eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars for, uh, uh, personal insurance. And, uh, uh, the governor did not, uh, propose.
Okay.
But you may continue, we are taking notes on your concerns, yes.
So, um, I don't have any other issues under procurement services if we may move on to revenue tax?
But before you do, uh, the request that you turned in for the eight hundred and twenty-eight, uh, for personal insurance, is that just for one employee or for two employees?
Para you don't, my, yeah.
Okay, so do you know that?
Thank you. So Mister Chairman, so you can move by, um, rev, rev tax?
You may proceed.
Okay. So for rev tax, we currently have four, four FTEs. Um. The only issue I. There is the difference, um. Between the departments and the difference on the fringe benefit from the department's mission and with the governor's proposal, and, and. As Ms. Vicky mentioned earlier, that th- those differences are whatever each employee option, whether it's to have insurance or the, um, four one.
Right, and maybe, uh, for the record, Ms. V, if you may just, uh, state for the record that it's the same issue that, uh, with regards to the past departments?
Thank you, Chairman, yes, it is, uh, the same issue across all the municipalities, across all departments, center, in the central government. Um, so, um, when the proposal, uh, is received by OMB, we verify actual, uh, participating employees, and that's how we would put the budget package together.
Thank you.
You may proceed, RD, Mendiola.
Okay, so moving on to financial services.
If I may, uh, before we move on to, uh, uh, financial, we're still at revenue and tax, so, uh, you, I see that you have requested, uh, five thousand for overtime purposes. Can you, uh, expand more, move to the committee, uh, what overtime, uh, are the division of revenue tax, uh, are taking?
Yes, yes, Mister Chairman. So everywhere as the tax season comes in, that's the only period that rev tax, um. Um, go and take extended hours in order for them to, they, to do their data entry.
Thank you for that clarification, you now may proceed to the next division.
So next division is revenue and taxation, there's currently four positions. Um. I do not have any issues to mention under this division unless any of, or you, Mister Chairman, or any of the members have any question before moving on to the next division?
Any question, which division are we on, uh?
We are in revenue and tax.
Revenue and tax, members, are there any questions on the revenue and tax division? If none, uh, you may proceed, RD, Mendiola.
Thank you. Next division is financial services. This division currently has three, um, FTEs. The concern I want to bring to your attention, Mister Chairman and members, and also to Ms. Vicky, is the allocation for the annual salary. If you can see for the accounting tool and administrative officer one, they are being only, uh, they are allocating only eighty percent? Is this just, I'm, I'm hoping it's just an error?
For clarification, Ms. V, uh, do you get, uh, the question?
I, I do see it now, uh, Mister Chairman, I can go back and verify whether, whether these two employees were funded from a special fund or something.
No, they're, they're not.
Okay. Um. I would have to verify, thank you, thank you.
Okay, uh, Ms. V, please, uh, verify and, uh, get back with the committee on that. Thank you, uh, RD Mendiola, you may proceed.
Uh, Mister Chair, uh, that's the only issue I have with, with, uh, financial services, if we may proceed, if no questions?
Uh, under financial services, let me recognize, uh, the floor later.
Thank you, Chairman. So I notice, I don't know, it doesn't say in my, they just kind of puts everybody together, finance and accounting. Um, do you pay rental?
Yes.
Okay, so, are you together with the mayor in that area too?
No, just, um, finance.
Just finance?
No, I'm sorry, finance is not, not in the same building as the mayor, we're different.
Okay, so you're not part of that ninety thousand?
No.
For that building, that's separate. So the twenty-eight thousand, that's for the whole year?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Representative, uh, Marisa Flores, uh, any other, under, uh? Finance? Uh, if not, uh, you may proceed, RD, uh, Mendiola, to the next, uh, division.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. So, um, next and last division is customs and biosecurity. So, with customs and biosecurity, there are currently eleven positions. Last fiscal year, which is twenty twenty-five. Um. We later were given four FTEs that will be under the CQ account in Saipan. Looking at the governor's proposal. Of those four FTEs. Um, Tinian is given one, and then the, the remaining three are a dollar funded.
So I can see, uh, under the, uh, worksheet for the, uh, vacancy, there is still one vacancy that is actually funded. Uh, is that correct?
Yes, that, that is the four that we were given on FY twenty twenty-five. But now, so it's reflecting on Tinian's account instead of the CQ account in Saipan.
But out of the four, uh, three of them are actually funded at the dollar, but, uh, there is one that is actually fully funded, or? Are you guys, uh, trying to fill that vacancy? Or is it in the process of, uh, being filled?
It's the, it's the only, no, no, you found, you thought, when you have my fund. Register ERFPA currently at the governor's office. It's a total mechanism, in, in the process. The selection from every, every, every department.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, uh, any other questions, uh, from, uh? The members, uh, for, uh, biosecurity, customs and biosecurity? Recognize, uh, Representative Patrick Saniclos.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Chairman, uh, Director. Uh, thank you, uh. Perhaps, uh, I think Major could answer this, no? The, uh. Is there any, if, any request FT, uh, FTEs for K nine hundred for here?
Uh, we are filling up all the. Uh, we are just filling up all the, uh, vacancy from the, uh, uh, we were given, uh, four vacant position. And we are filling up all those positions. Yeah, uh, there's only one left that is being announced for custom, and there's another one that's also being announced for quarantine. Uh, no, no, we don't have any.
Thank you, uh, Representative, um. Um, Patrick Saniclos. With regards to, uh, customs services, I know that, uh, it's reflective here in our, uh, worksheet, that, uh, division itself, uh, requested for twenty thou, twenty thousand for overtime compensation, uh. Uh, can you expand more on the uses of this, uh? I know that, uh, sometimes they are, uh, under control, uh, circumstances that they must, uh, you know, entertain, uh. Whether it's imported goods or, uh, passengers coming, uh, from, uh, the other, uh, central districts, so can you, uh, expound, uh, this request of, uh, twenty thousand, uh, in overtime?
Uh, yes, uh, we requested those, uh, overtime, uh, funds, uh, for those, uh, over, uh, work hours that, uh, are not, uh, billable, or especially those, uh. Especially for those, uh, enforcement, uh, sides. That are, that we cannot, uh, uh, that are, cannot be compensated by the, uh, the consignee or.
Right.
Uh, mostly special operations, yes.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification, but if you do, uh, like for instance, the seaport, right, part of it, and you guys do assess the, uh, consignee for those overtime?
Uh, yes, we build them, uh.
Build those, uh, consignee, right?
Yes, correct.
For, for the employees. Thank you for that clarification, are there any other, uh, questions, uh, from the members for customs and biosecurity? Let me recognize the vice chair.
Hey, thank you, Mister Chairman, just a clarifying question, uh, RD, I thank you guys again for, uh, being with us this afternoon, and for making your time and be available, uh. You had mentioned that the four NOPS were under CQ account? Was that for the previous fiscal year, or?
Yes. Twenty twenty-five.
Okay, so, but now, one of the four vacancies is gonna be addressed by the general account?
Okay.
No, they, 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 in process, esta? But, well, turn a position in process?
I, giza, esti, uno, kage pagus, si, gyo, sinan, ni go beno.
Okay, we see, ni, ki, nama fond, isti, na, na, position, si, esta, una, zani, i, documentu, she, ama, fera, di, final signature, no?
Okay.
Okay. We see, otro, i, di tres, ni, menshona. Under i CQ account, giza, gi, gi, gi under customs, in general, not, not Saipan, or, or anything like that, no?
Okay.
Okay. Okay. And, uh, Mister Desana, you had mentioned that the, um, that twenty thousand dollar in overtime? You said that you're requesting for additional twenty thousand dollars for the enforcement part? Is that correct? Uh, the consignees don't pay for the, the, uh, manpower hours?
Uh, no, that's a, a separate one for the, uh, enforcement. Because in, enforcement, we don't, uh, it's, it's us that, uh, we usually, uh, make the, uh, the extra hours. But if we, the, uh, for the seaport, like, like the vessel clearance, then we, we build the, uh, vessels, e, even the consignee. If there's a inspection after working hours, then we build the, uh, the consignee.
Okay, thank you for that, thank you, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, are there any other questions from the members, recognize, uh, Representative, uh, Patrick Saniclos?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman, uh, Major, uh, going back to the previous question that I asked, uh. Uh, in regards to, uh, cannon handlers. Uh, have you ever requested from, uh, Saipan, uh, office? Um. For cannon handlers for Tinian, or have you ever in, get in touch with, uh, Director Mafnas in the regards? For, for, for ho, for us to, uh, for the second and the third district to have this, uh, cannon handlers on?
Yes, uh, we'll, we'll be happy to have, uh, one, uh, a ca, at least one canine handler here in, in Tinian, but, uh, because of also fundings, uh, so, right now, uh, Director Mafnas is very supportive with the, uh, with this kind of, uh, uh, support to us, that, uh, whenever we need a canine, i, they always, uh, usually, uh, comes here. Especially that we are just very close to Saipan, so it just, uh, it's, uh, preferably that we just do the, that kind of, uh, that kind of system that, uh, they just come here with a, with a canine, and other, uh, and, other, uh, employee of the, uh, Sin, uh, Sinamaya Customs.
So only when you request it, when Director Mafnas, uh, brings the, uh?
Not really requested, but if they, they feel like they, they, we need, we need them here, they, they usually come to.
Okay, okay, thank you, thank you for that, uh, answer. Uh, thank you, Mister Chairman, I use.
Thank you, uh, Rep., uh, Saniclos, any further questions from the members? Recognize, uh, Representative Marisa Flores.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for coming. So on your overtime, is this a set, um, are you guys like on standby, or when you clock in, you, the overtime applies?
Uh, yes, when we clock in.
Okay, and for how many people does this support?
Uh, there's a minimum of at least, uh, two, two personnel.
Uh, scab, uh, staggered?
Uh, depending on the, uh, the work, uh, the operation.
Okay. And that should, that dollar amount should take you all the way to the end of fiscal year twenty twenty-six?
Uh, yes.
No contingency plan, if there's some kind of extra hours that need to be set, you have no other place to pull money from, or where would you go?
Uh, right now, uh, so far, that's, uh, one we feel that is, uh, needed for the, for the whole fiscal year.
So I guess this is my question for OMB, if she's available, do they have any special funds? And there's a reason why, cause. Do you have any special funds, sir?
Uh, no, we don't have any, no, we don't have any.
None at all? That you know of, or?
Yeah.
It's never been told to you that you have a special fund?
Unless you're referring to the CQ account, that's, uh, Saipan, the one, you know, taking care of that, yes.
Do you get, do you get any money from that?
Uh, they are sharing it to, share, sharing it to us. Like the, uh, the FTE that we have, uh, under the CQ account. And some, uh, uh, equipment, uniforms. Yes.
Okay. So, because when you're looking at your budget, there's so many variances. Uh, and. You know, and then you have travel. Requested twenty thousand dollars in travel, what is that for?
Uh, it's mostly, uh, trainings. Probably, m- meetings. Just in case, uh, uh, also training, uh, outside the Sinamaya.
And how many people would that assist, twenty thousand?
Uh, that's for the whole, uh, employee of the division of custom and biosecurity.
So you would have to be the one to pick who goes?
Uh, yes, uh, yes, of course, yes.
Alright, um. You have twelve thousand for office equipment, is this? What is this?
Uh, that's mostly for, uh, computers. Yeah, because right now, we, we have only one, uh, uh, computer, uh, we are using it as a cashier at the seaport and one at the airport. And if one fails, then that's it, that we cannot, uh, do any collection anymore, so. We really need those, uh, uh, new computers.
The purchase of one, or is that to repair and maintain?
Yeah, yes, yeah, that includes, uh.
That's on the repairs and maintenance?
Yes, it, it.
Do you pay for any subscriptions for your computer?
Uh, no.
No. And then. Supplies, operations, everybody needs that. Communications, is that for your local line, or your cell, how many of you have cell phones, or how does that work?
We don't have any cell, only the, uh, our, uh, in, internet, and, uh, uh, phones.
Alright, so on this repair and maintenance, assuming you take this twelve thousand for technology equipment and move it to repairs and maintenance, would that work? That would give you about twelve, twenty thousand, as opposed to eight?
Yeah, yeah, that will work, yes.
And then your freight and handling, what is, what is this, where, is this inter-island freight?
Uh, yes. Yeah, just in case we have, uh, like, uh, you know, the office supply, oh, office supplies or those things, uh, equipment. In case we have to, usually, we have to buy it in Saipan, so we, we incur some rates.
Okay, so then, on this special fund that's here. I see that it was zeroed out. But I'm just wondering, what is the process when you ask biosecurity in the central, how do you guys talk to each other? You just say, I need the money, can you transfer it over, or how does that work?
Uh, usually, we just ask for the supplies, uh, directly, not, uh, not any, any funds, but usually, uh, supplies.
So you have to put a requisition request, they do the shopping for you, and then they send it over to you?
No, they do all those things, all we have to do is, uh, call them up, send an email saying, we need this one.
Does that?
During our Zoom meeting, so those things.
Does that in any way hamper your operation?
Yeah, right now, because, uh, we lack, uh, our own funds, and we, you have to request, you have to request from, uh, the, the custom in Saipan. If they do have, the mayor's office, and, and other department that, that can help us out with the, uh, those, uh, supplies.
Okay, so my last question is, obviously, there's a lot of, uh, business happen around here of Department of Defense, and so if you. Uh, one of the problems that we encountered is that they bring in their freight, their container, or whatever it is. And it's never inspected at the port of Saipan, it comes straight over this way, and then you. It comes straight over this way, and then you guys wait for somebody from Saipan to come and inspect, or can you do that?
No, yeah, we do that here in Tinian, yes.
Okay. So one of the things that is happening right now is that there's no port. They don't stop in Saipan, right? They come straight over here, and sometimes the inspector comes from Saipan over this way, and it just gets kind of crazy. Everybody's flying back and forth to inspect the container, correct?
No, we do all the inspection here in Tinian with our own, uh, employees.
Okay. Have you ever encountered any time or any moment where there was an invasive, invasive species or any kind of unidentifiables that shouldn't be in here during this transition of containers?
Yeah, we do, uh, we found some, uh, little far ants in one of the, uh, vessels. And what the Biosecurity did is that they send the, uh, the vessel back to Guam for, uh, to remove all this, uh, the, uh, invasive species. And, uh, we have a counterpart in Guam that, uh, mean, that, uh, do, does the, uh, uh, monitor the, uh, the cleaning and, and, and they can, uh, after that, then that's the time they, they let us know, uh, how they did. And the cargo can come back and, uh, discharge again to Tinian.
So they pay for that, I assume?
Uh, yes, the, uh, mostly the consignee.
Yeah, he...
Yes.
The department pays for that?
Yeah, we send back the whole, uh, the vessel back to Guam.
Okay. Does, are you in any way, obviously, DLNR, is, that's their function, is to ensure that there are no invasive species in the land, air, sea, what have you? Um, do you receive any portionate or percentage of any federal funds that aid in your training for that, or how does that work? No?
No, we, we didn't receive any. So we are, we are doing most of those, uh, stuff in, uh, at the, uh, entry port, but we never receive any, uh, funding from.
And what time do they usually, these containers come?
Uh, depending on the vessel, uh, anytime, yeah, midnight, or even morning, afternoon, anytime they, they feel, they scheduled, yeah, they, I mean, they're scheduled to, to come.
Okay, so does the, does your office receive that schedule?
Uh, yes, yes, we do.
All right, and the only reason why I'm asking is just, again, for the overtime, for human resource, what your schedules are, because if that's something you can fix, and we can say, you know, you come in during a regular hour, uh, we don't know, right? I'm assuming that if that's something we can address, then it's great, right? You don't have to work overtime if it's not necessary, right?
But that, that, that's not the, always the, the thing, yeah.
Right, that's not always the case. Okay, thank you. Uh, Ayu, my time.
Thank you, Representative, uh, Flores. Let me recognize Representative Julie Ogut, and then, uh, Representative, uh, Joe Flores.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, so, uh, Secretary, I'm sorry, RD, I'm Diola. Um, you have here, uh, you, you requested for utilities, not just for customs, but there other departments, uh, divisions in your department. Um, are you guys on prepaid?
Yes, for financial services, procurement services, and revenue tax were prepaid.
Okay, uh, this is not covered under the Mayor's Office, uh, allocation of the two fifty K?
Yes.
Right, Chief?
Yes.
But so you're asking for an additional, uh, utilities for, for utilities?
Yes, just to give it a try, doesn't hurt to try.
Okay, all right, thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, recognize, uh, Representative Joe Flores.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this is a question for the Major. Major, are your officers equipped with sidearms?
Uh, yes, we are.
So, in your, how often you had, uh, your officers get certified for?
I think we are supposed to be certified every s- six months.
Do you do it every six months, or?
Not really all the time, uh, sometimes, uh...
Not sometimes?
But at least, uh, for sure, uh, within, uh, a year.
A year? Okay, so, okay, in, in that case, well, for dominicians, uh, participate for, for certification, who does the certification, you guys? You go offline, or somebody here that's certified?
Uh, right now, the, uh, we have, uh, custom officers that are doing the certification, and also they are the one, uh, furnishing all the, uh, ammo, ammunitions, and even our sidearm, yes.
So you're, there, the custom officers is buying ammunition? Do you guys have ammunition on hand, or?
Yeah, yeah, yes, uh, Saipan, uh, Saipan is the one, uh, procuring all of those things.
So within six months that you wanna be certified, there's ammunitions available for that six month? Or you have to wait for another six months, cause the availability, because as we said earlier, that sometimes six months, or it's within a year, but usually it's six months, and then every six months, another one year? So is there ammunition, or the instructor scheduling, or which is?
Uh, right now, the Customs and Biosecurity has their own instructors, and it's, it's really up to Saipan on how they, how they get those supplies, uh, for, for the scheduled certification.
So Saipan, Saipan makes the schedule?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so whenever you request it, the ammunitions are there, instructor will be furnishing.
Uh, yes.
So there's no problem with ammunitions and everything for your guys to be certified?
Yeah, but, yes, Saipan is the one, uh, working on those, uh, uh, procuring those stuff, yes.
Okay, they're, they're just gonna make sure, 'cause we had that incident when there, there was a problem with ammunitions and certifications and everything, and they took them already two years, and they haven't been certified, so that, that's a good process.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Thank you, Representative, uh, Joe Flores. Uh, with a follow-up, let me recognize Representative Marisa Flores.
Thank you, Major, and just one more question. This goes back again to the overtime, because we know that the Department of Defense is here. Um, are you guys, can you establish your own fees? Are you, do you have the autonomy to do that? Landing fees and all that stuff?
Oh, no, only the, uh, overtime, uh, charges.
Okay, so, when they dock here, that's all appi- applicable, and correct me if I'm wrong, Council, so that's a Commonwealth uh, tax structure for the, the, the shipments and stuff coming in? That's already implemented in all of these landing fees and all this stuff? CPA sets the fees, okay. So maybe that's one thing you might wanna consider, Mayor? Take a look at CPA and up, upping that rate, right? Because then you can take out from there a percentage and pay the overtime. If that's possible, I mean, the military can just take a black, uh, black card, is that what you said?
Actually, there's a, there's a structure already with, uh, Customs, uh, to assess overtime.
Yeah, we...
There is a structure already, and that's the CIQ, uh, structure.
Right, and so again, you know, we don't know what twenty twenty-six is gonna look like. We might be in the hole again for twenty twenty-seven. It's just thinking about other ways that we can, again, have these conversations. Um, and if it's possible, it's great. If it's not, at least you try, right? Just like you would ask for the utilities, but we don't know if they're gonna fund you your utilities. Um, but I think that's something you can do, since they have the black, uh, credit card. Got a lot of money to blow, so might wanna have those conversations with the military, because, uh, you know, um, strategically, they're here whether we like it or not. And the people also need to be compensated for this type of, uh, stuff. Anyway, okay, thank you. Ayu, my time.
Thank you, uh, Rep, uh, Flores, Marisa. Uh, Major, uh, just to follow up, the question of, uh, Rep, uh, Patrick Saniklos. You guys used to have a K nine handler here, right?
Uh, yes, we do.
And that employee is still here?
Uh, no, uh, he went to the military.
Okay, so, so, yeah, to go through the process again, it's gonna take, uh, a lot of, uh, yeah, process, uh, but, uh, you, you mentioned that you, uh, you work very closely with, uh, Saipan Office Director Mafnas, and he al- always helps you guys here.
Uh, yes, yes, he does.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any, uh, uh, further questions from the members? Recognize Representative, uh, Patrick Saniklos.
Uh, Director, um, this in regards to, uh, going back to revenue and tax. Uh, besides BGRT, uh, what other tax, uh, is revenue tax collection, uh, collecting?
Besides BGRT, we have bar tax. We have the ones from Customs with the excise, verification, tax collections. We have photo occupancy. We have quite a few.
Okay, so approximately, like, uh, how much, uh, tax have been remitted to the Department of Finance?
Pretty numbers.
Uh, approximately, yeah, Director?
So we're looking at this fiscal year, present current fiscal year, fiscal year from October to May, we've collected six point one.
Thank you.
Is that a follow-up question? Is that just BGRT, six point one?
Ay, Mr. Chairman, and...
That's all taxes.
...to the pumalo na tax.
All taxes together, because actually Finance actually collects the, the all tax structures, right?
Ungan.
So that's not the entire fiscal year, right? That's...
Is, is six point one from October to...
September?
To May.
October to May?
October twenty twenty-four to May twenty twenty-five.
Okay, oh, okay, thank you.
Current fiscal year.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Chairman, Ayu.
Thank you, Representative, uh, Saniklos. Are there any, uh, further questions for Department of Finance? And before we, uh, dismiss them, I believe, uh, Ms. Vee already got the answer for, uh, RD Diola with her first questions. Ms. Vee?
So we just want, OMB wants to acknowledge that there is an underfunding under that two FTEs, and will make corrections and communicate to the legislature.
Sezus Masih.
Uh, so if there's no further, further, uh, questions from the committee, I wanna take this opportunity, uh, to thank you, RD Diola, and, uh, your divisions, uh, Major De Senna, for joining us and answering the questions, uh, of the committee itself. And I'll give you the last words before we next, uh, go on a lunch break.
Mr. Chairman, Espensas, uh, finakta i Departmenton Finance, gai gi humalun propu gi launch time. Luguwa uno dangkulu na issue malago beri bi, uh, jamaan tension midu. Amzu ko takuntunua after a lunch break, or...?
Ay, senya ta, guagua division, if you wanna, uh, go before the, uh, body with that division, you may proceed.
Komon moli kant?
Yes. We will, uh, finish the Department of Finance before we enter to lunch.
Okay, so this last concern that I wanna bring up to you guys' attention is, um, still Customs and Biosecurity. So recently, the employees under the division, um, got their reallocation and reclassification. So that will bring the personnel in a much bigger difference than what we see here today. And I'm just so glad that Secretary and OMB are here to, so that we can all clarify and understand our...
So do you have a question for, uh, OMB and, uh, Secretary of Finance, or is, uh, Ms. Vee? To the adjustments, are there, are there any, uh, work going on, on any adjustments for, uh, is it for Biosecurity, uh, RD?
Ungan, um...
As we speak right now, are there any, uh, yeah?
Mr. Chairman, my concern is with, with this, um, issue is, I wanna ask this committee and also comms with the Senate, if they can, um, it's, because currently, the reallocation and reclassification are being funded by CQ account, correct, Secretary?
Yes, that's correct.
So, me as the resident director, I wanna ask, um, this committee and also with the Senate to give the funding source for this particular issue to Tinian. The most man chunkilo i departamentu zanima zor zan employa, na i funding source ginin Tinian account.
You mean whatever you assess, uh, here?
No, because esti i, i nwebu ni man manoi, reclassifications and reallocation, no, i, i, i employa.
Right.
It's being funded from the CQ account. So komo- komo hinata ni zonya no pa esti shana employa, certain percentage kina cover gi general fund, certain percentage kina cover gi CQ account. Peshi malago zonabe, paisen supotashon midu todo, parewa isan papa zonisani luna guma. Zai inoi, i departamentun finance tinian ni esti na, na percentage i kina cover ginini CQ account. Zo, zo sa, uh, gi general fund na account para Tinian.
Duli, duly noted. Thank you, RD. Is that, uh, everything you have, uh, with regards to your department?
Ungan.
Okay, so, uh, if you wanna have a closing remarks, uh, before we, uh, uh, break for lunch, if not, uh, we will, uh, break for lunch.
Okay, did you have a closing remarks, uh, esta moski oran lunchla? So Chairman Sablon zan vice chair ato, zan todo samzu ni membrun esti na kumite. Sezus Masih talu pudi apunit, aputunirat. Anai ta diskuti i finaisin i departamentun finance ginimogigi za Tinian. Karasakan zaman motu estina, uh, karasakan zan motu estina tempu gi tempun budget. Hami todos ni director, zanima zor specialmenti indesea. Za, in, in deseia esti na kumite para in fanamzu todos, zan fanmato tsuparehu. Zai inatan i finaisini departamentu sia. Zai na imano i ginagago, na intansion, attention, zan supotashon gi bondan pondun salopi. Ani para i departamentu umaseet bigi obigao na responsibida gi kominida. Gi anaisa sutasangan un marionas, bay hutumitastemoju. Gi confiansa zan ilango ku para tolu, unusamzu ni, ni mangai gi ginipo gu namani hita. Bay noy amzu ni nona finatsotsumizu zan decision, zan supotashon midu. Gi finaisin momomi para, ofinaisesean opa gu para i departamentun finance ginigi za Tinian. Talu sezus Masih, zaman ansasam todo para bay in nanga zabe in di i i produktu. Ginina finatsotsumizu para esti mamamala na fisika, takan dosme banti size. Talumbrai, sinmas, buenas, toadis para hita todos. Sezus Masih.
Sezus Masih, uh, RD Diola. So we're, uh, we're gonna take a, uh, recess for a lunch break, and, uh, on our return, uh, we will return and resume at two PM. And, uh, we will start with Commerce, followed by the Department of Labor and the Department of Land and Natural Resources. And, uh, if we have more time, we will continue on with the commi-, uh, DCCA also this afternoon, so, uh, so recess, uh, recess for lunch, sorry.